Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular scheduled meeting of the Beaver Creek City Council. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Little.
Here.
Councilmember Rushing.
Here.
Councilmember Upton.
Here.
Councilmember Van.
Here.
Councilmember Kern.
Here.
Vice Mayor Garcia.
Here.
Mayor Stone.
Here. This time, I'd like to turn it over to Councilmember Rushing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If we call Stan for the Pledge of Allegiance. I don't see any Boy Scouts, so if we would, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Remain standing and have a moment of silence to reflect on the recent events in Florida and anywhere else that experiences pain. We wish you well. Thank you.
Next, we have an agenda before us. Are there any corrections or deletions or additions? Seeing none?
Motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Approval of the minutes, February 12th, 2018, the regular meeting minutes. Any corrections or additions?
None. Seeing none, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from February 12th, 2018, regular meeting as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We're -- have the pleasure this evening of having a couple pre-scheduled presenters. Avenue of Flags, the Green County Optimists, Erin Henry, Rob Fortman, Craig Keiger -- Tiger, I'm sorry. I was told the right way to do it in the first place. Please come forward and introduce yourselves and tell us what you got.
Yeah, I am Rob Fortman. I am the current president of the Green Optimist Club. Thank you for the opportunity to just share with you a little bit about our Avenue of Flags program. Before I do that, I thought I'd just like to share our mission, vision, and purpose. Our club has been around since 2013. We have roughly forty active members. We are currently the fastest-growing optimist club in Ohio, so we're pretty proud about that. Our current mission is by providing hope and positive vision, optimists bring out the best in youth, our communities, and ourselves. Our current vision, Optimists International, will be recognized worldwide as the premier volunteer organization that values all children and helps them to develop their full potential. And lastly, our purpose, to develop optimism as a philosophy of life utilizing the tenets of the Optimist Creed, to promote an active interest in good government and civic affairs, to inspire respect for the law, to promote patriotism and work for international accord and friendship among all people, to aid and encourage the development of youth in the belief that the giving in oneself in service to others will advance the well-being of humankind, community, life, and the world. With that, our main fundraising event that we do at the Optimist is our Avenue of Flags program. And with that, I will turn it over to Erin Henry.
Thank you, Rob. And thank you, councilmembers and Mayor Stone. Thank you for having us. I am the immediate past president of the Green Optimist Club, been an optimist all my life. As Rob mentioned, we have tenets to our optimism. Each one of you were given our Optimist Creed. I would encourage you, especially those days that you might find challenging, to read the creed.[258.82][258.82](Laughter). As Rob mentioned, our biggest fundraiser that we are so proud to do for our community in an effort not only to show patriotism but also to support our mission in bringing out the best in kids is our Avenue of Flags program. This is a program that we started just a couple of years ago now, and it has grown. We started initially with twenty-five flags. We now have almost over two-hundred flags that we are putting out in the community on five-flag holidays. Each of you were given a brochure. This is a subscription service that what happens is each of the flag holidays, right before the flag holiday, which includes on your brochure, it's the Memorial Day, Flag Day, Fourth of July, Labor Day, and Veterans Day, we will put -- we store the flags, we put the flags out in front of a residence or a business, and the subscription is fifty dollars per flag. If you have more than one flag, we reduce that price. And that flag stays out during the duration of the holiday. After the holiday, we take that flag back, we make sure that it's stored until the next flag holiday. So we're super excited about this. It's a time, again, that we can show patriotism in our community, and we take the funds and do -- there's a variety of things that we have been able to do with the funds that we've raised from this program. Most recently, we started contributing by cooking dinner at the Ronald McDonald House. Couple of other things that we participate in. We support Beaver Creek Park and Recreation as well as any educational needs that are related to STEM, Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math initiatives. We've been able to donate money to shoes for the shoeless. We've been able to donate money to Feed the Creek, Four Paws for Ability, Books to the Rescue, Girls on the Run, and our list continues. This week, we have the privilege of being able to donate some funds to Ella's Pottery Pot Project, which the Decoy Art Studio has just launched. So we're really excited and wanted to share this program with you. Rob or I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have, but we appreciate your time that you've given to us this evening.
Well, thank you for being here, and it is really a thrill to see the flags go up at those special days. I know you had a little bit of a conflict with some of them being misused or misplaced.
We did.
Going further than that, but it --
We did.
But it looks like most of them stay up pretty well and stay up pretty nice.
The last couple of times, we have not had any flags taken.
Now, that's a good thing.
Yes.
I applaud our community for that.
Yes.
Keep an eye on them.
Yes.
But yeah, we, you know, like I say, I really enjoy that particular program and, of course, support the same causes that you support.
Yes.
I think a lot of us do, but it -- so thank you for being here and competing. Can we -- is there any way to attach this, at least this program, if nothing else, onto our website? So people can, you know, can know a little bit more about it and be able to reach you and know how easy it is to do.
Fantastic.
All right.
Thank you, Mayor Stone.
We'll do that. Thank you. Any comments from council?
Just a great program.
Questions?
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Yes.
First, thanks for coming out tonight, guys. I really appreciate it. I'm with you. The Avenue of Flags is a really neat event, and unfortunately, my home is on a cul-de-sac off of a dead-end street, so not a lot of people get to see my flag. But I'd like to sponsor one for City Hall here, get it out in front of the building and on the roadway there. I think it'd be pretty neat to do that and see if we can get some of the businesses on this road to go along with us.
That is fantastic. Thank you.
Fill this out and get it too.
All right.
Well, thank you. Anybody else? All right. Thank you very much for coming out this evening.
Thank you.
Thanks for everything.
Thank you.
Next, we have the Green County Fire Ops 101. This is Beaver Creek Professional Firefighters. Hello, sir.
Hello.
How are you?
I'm doing great. How are you?
Good. Please introduce yourself.
My name's Todd Los. I'm here representing the Beaver Creek Professional Firefighters. Thank you for your time. I'm here to talk about an opportunity that we've kind of found ourselves in. We went, me and three other guys from the Beaver Creek Fire Department, went down to Florida and learned about this program the IFF has been doing in the United States and Canada, just letting elected officials know what it's like to be a fireman for a day. The whole program consists of elected officials and the media coming out, putting on fire gear, putting on the breathing apparatus, and actually going into a live fire, which is the highlight of the day. But you also get to tear up cars, you know, anything you guys see at our open houses when we're cutting cars apart and getting people out, you're going to get to do all of that, crawl through smoky buildings and find victims and help drag them out. There's also an EMS scenario. You'll get to ride around in the back of an ambulance while you're bumping down the road and see what it's like to actually try to like put a bandage on somebody when they're hurt. We're joining with Wright Patterson, Fairborn, and Xenia with this, and the whole event is at the base with their -- at their burn tower. The event is on September 28th, and we're looking for it to be between 8:00 a.m. to noon. That time may vary, but that's what we're shooting for. It's just going to be a really cool time. We're inviting the television media and Dayton Daily News, as well as federal officials from the base, base officials, and Xenia and Fairborn are inviting their local government as well. So this should be a really good time, and we'd like to see a lot of you guys come out. If you don't want to participate, you know, with actually doing the event, you can always come and observe, but it's going to be a very controlled environment, it's going to be very safe. We have a lot of instructors. There's probably going to be more instructors than participants, so you guys will be very safe. We'll take care of you. But it'd be exciting to see you guys come out and see what it's like to do our job. So with that, does anybody have any questions about this whole thing?
Please.
Yeah, if Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind. How do I sign up?
I'm going to hand out invitations here, and I'm your point of contact.
Okay.
My name's Todd Los. And then if you can't get ahold of me, Chris Heaton is the secondary point of contact. But yeah, just get with me, and we'll get the ball rolling. I'll need to get some information for me to get you on base, to get you vetted. But that's all, all the information should be in this packet. Just send me an email, and we can get everything going, but everyone's invited. It'll be a party.
Sounds like a really fun event.
Well, we'll go together.
I love that idea.
I do want to drive the fire truck.
Well, maybe next time, like this time.
I've driven a NASCAR. I can do fire truck. I don't know. It might have a little damage on it.
Yeah.
The test of your courage will be when they put you in a room with a lot of smoke and they push everybody into this room. I went through this.
Local 136 firefighters sponsored that.
Dayton Fire.
And I went through the whole process, and where we lost people was in this small room. They filled with smoke, and about half of them, they had to get out of there because of claustrophobia and I don't know what it was.
It's a totally -- yeah.
It was really something. Quite an experience.
I can't ride in the back of the ambulance. I have to be in the front seat.[755.82][755.82](Laughter). I will just say that for all of you that may attend.
The really neat thing about this is, especially with our fire ops, is it's that Wright Patterson. I'm actually excited about it, too, because I've never got to do a airplane scenario, but they have an airplane that they actually light off and show you what the R.F. guys do on base if there was a plane crash. And also, it can help show, you know, the special tools that we have that are kind of expensive, we can kind of display why they're important, and you can see the difference between having that and not having that in a scenario, and what a difference that can make in saving lives. With that, I'd just hand out some invitations really quickly here.
Well, it is a -- it is an experience that you will remember forever. As a township trustee, I had to -- I want to say privileged, and I'm not real sure about this, but if going -- they had a practice burn of a house on Factory Road. This goes back a few years, and I went down just to watch. Well, they said, "Come here, young fellow." And so they suited me up, and I went in that house chasing that fire down with the rest of a few other firefighters.
Wow.
And it was quite an experience. It -- I'll never forget it. They said, "Just get closer. Get a little closer."[834.01][834.01](Laughter). But no, I think this is going to -- this is a wonderful thing that they're doing, to reach out to more of the elected officials around the communities, because very few people have that opportunity to do that. So I will certainly be there whether I want to go into a burning building a second time. I'm not 100% sure.
Excellent.
I like the partnership that you've built. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Well, thank you very much, and I think we'll all be excited about filling out your application.
Excellent. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right. Next on the agenda, ordinance resolutions and PUDs. Ordinance 18-01.
This is the third reading of an ordinance to appropriate certain real property interests owned by William O. Ayers for the National Road Widening Project in the city of Beaver Creek, Ohio.
Thank you very much. This is the third reading of this ordinance. Is there any discussion? This ordinance was sponsored by Councilmember Van.
I would move for approval of this ordinance.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 18-01. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Resolution 18-09.
This is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Green County Parks District Commissioners and Trail Management Committee.
Thank you. We've had discussions on this, and please, give us some more.
Good evening. So yes, so city of Beaver Creek Parks Department is part of the Green County Trail Management Committee. So this committee just gets together, and we all oversee a portion of Creek Side Trail. Each local entity owns part of that. With Green County Parks and Trails taking lead on maintaining said trail. Back in 2015, when they passed their levy, they, being Green County, agreed to put a million dollars into Creek Side Trail each year for the next five years. So this agreement is basically just stating that they are putting this money into Creek Side Trail. No additional funds will come out of any of the local entities, but they were just looking for everybody's signature, so.
Thank you. Questions? Comments?
Motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve resolution 18-09. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Decision items. Authorize city manager to proceed with Public Utilities Commission of Ohio certification. As we all know, sometime quite a number, several years ago, the public voted to, you know, at least consider a aggregation for the electric utilities. And so this is just an authorization for us to allow the city manager to move forward. Any comments? Discussion?
Just one, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make sure that the citizens realize that we've had several meetings about this, and we've had several companies, or not really say companies, but several vendors come and speak to us about the information and the information clearing that has been -- Green County Commissioner actually came as well a while back, and so, you know, it's been on the ballot, it's been approved, and it's just us moving forward.
Correct. And as far as clarification, again, this is not an authorization to enter into aggregation.
Correct.
It's simply a matter to be certified, which is the first step by the PUCO.
If I may, Mayor, part of the being certified by the PUCO is to have public hearings. So part of this, we'll be conducting a couple of different public hearings to make if there's any further questions, more discussion by the public, we'll get all that information out before we even go to the certification process, so.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
I make a -- second.
I have a motion and a second to authorize city manager to move forward with the PUCO certification. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Now, the fun part. Are we going to get some help on this one for --
Mr. McGrath.
Board commission appointments. All right. Vice Mayor has -- would you like to explain why you would like to move the order that we normally do?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I noticed when I was reviewing these that one specific board has a specific experience requirement that is needed, and it has five vacancies, and that's the tree advisory board. So there's currently five vacancies, and there were six people who showed some kind of interest in that board. Of those six people, five of them have the required experience, and all five of them rank that as their top board choice. So I thought it may be worth taking a look at that first. That way, we can get the five people who all have the experience and rank that as their top choice. Maybe go through that first and see if everyone's on board with them. There we go.
So would you like to make a motion to open the appointment, or the nomination procedure for that committee you just mentioned?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I move to open nominations for the tree advisory board committee.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are open for nominations. Is it -- I might entertain a motion to nominate all five of those at once, if you'd like.
If that's okay with everyone? I can read the names off.
May I interrupt first, though?
Sure.
If you will scroll up all the way. We have three different terms that we have to appoint.
For the tree?
For the tree committee.
Okay.
Because since this is the initial -- this is the initial appointment to this committee, we have to stagger the terms so that they don't all, like, expire on the same year. So for the first, we have to be specific of what terms we're appointing these people to.
Should we do the per your instructions? Thank you very much. Two appointments for the March 1st through the February 28th.
Yes. I think that's a good idea. Yes. So is there -- I guess I would make the motion for Steve McLean.
Just a nomination, please.
A nomination. And Stuart Moats to be appointed for the term of March 1st, 2018, through February 28th of 2021.
I would nominate Jeanne Cooney.
For which?
For the same -- I mean, aren't we going to vote on individual?
The which term?
You've got to do the second one. Here, Joel.
Here, let's do it. Ask me for Stair terms for this term.
So I would -- no, I would -- I think she would be terrific, so I would like her for the longer term. That was what I -- that's what I was saying. I -- she's just a terrific person, and so I would like her to be considered for the longest term.
Okay. Do I have any further nominations? Are we going to close it for this term?
Motion to close nominations for this term.
Motion to close.
Okay.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to close nominations for this term. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Do we have a motion to appoint?
No, you have to vote. You have to vote.
There's two -- there's three nominations, but only two seats available.
Only two on this one?
On this term.
Okay.
So we need to vote twice.
All right. Start to vote. Vote for Stuart Moats, please. All in -- raise your hand. Vote for Steve McLean. You can vote for two, and that's it.
Yep.
And a vote for Janine Cooney.
Janine Cooney.
There's three on that one.
Should be twelve or fourteen votes, right? I think.
We're missing a vote.
I think it was five. One before was actually.
McLean was five?
Yeah. That's McLean.
All right. So there's the -- you can see the results. Do I have a motion to appoint?
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Stuart Moats and Steve McLean for the term of March 1st, 2018, through March -- excuse me, through February 28th, 2021.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
I'd like to open nominations for term March 1st, 2018, through February 29th, 2020.
Second.
I have a motion to open nominations for the second term. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Mayor, to appoint Glenn Duer.
To nominate.
To nominate. Thank you.
Do I have any other nominations? I'd make a nomination for Jeanne Cooney.
I'd make a nomination for William Ruck.
Okay.
I would move that nominations cease.
I have a motion to close nominations. All in favor, say aye.
I need a second.
Oh, sorry.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Nominations are closed. Now we'll have a vote. I will just quickly say, well, no, I won't either, but it -- we want to, yes, the vice mayor and I would like to point out just real quickly that because this one does require certain qualifications, that Mr. Duer does not appear to meet that qualification. I think he meets a lot of other qualifications from some of the other boards and commissions, but I just wanted to mention that.
Interesting.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. All right. Let's have a vote. And we will start, and Janine Cooney, please. William Ruck, please. Glenn Duer, please. Okay. Do I have a motion to appoint?
I would move that we approve, that we appoint Jeanne Cooney and Will M., misspelled, Ruck, to the term of March 1st, 2018, to February 28th, 2020.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Third term. Do we have a motion to open nominations?
Motion to open nominations?
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
I would move to appoint Jeff Burshin.
Yeah. Right. Second.
Motion to close nominations.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to close nominations. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. I have a --
Vote to appoint by acclamation.
You just need -- yeah, you just need to appoint.
Make an appointment.
Just go ahead.
Councilmember Van, would you like to make the appointment, since you nominated the person?
I would move to appoint Jerry Burstein to the term that begins March 1st, 2018, and ends February 28th, 2019. He can be reappointed if he reapplies at that point, maybe, potentially.
Second.
Well, Jeff Burshin. As for clarification, I think you said Jerry Burstein.
Oh, sorry. Jeff. See, it wasn't a good idea for me to.
You're closest to the chart. I thought you could do it.
Well, it's too close. It's right there.
Did we get a second?
Second.
All right. All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much. All right, now, we can open nominations for whichever board or commission. Do you want to start with Planning Commission?
Yes.
Do I have a motion to open nominations for Planning Commission?
Yes, I'll move.
I'd move Alex Height.
Well, let's get this first part over with first. Need a mo, need a second to the motion. I think I got it from Ms. Van. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Sorry.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now we're, nominations for Planning Commission.
Now.
I'd move that Mr. Height, Alex Height, be considered for this position.
If no other nominations, I'll move to close nominations.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to close nominations. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Do I have a motion to appoint?
So, a motion to appoint Alex Height.
Second?
Second.
A motion and a second to appoint Alex Height to the open term, open seat on Planning Commission. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Now, I'm looking for an opening for nominations for BZA. Do I have a motion?
Motion to open nominations?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to open nominations for the seats on BZA. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Nominations are open.
I'll nominate Glenn Duer for the full term for the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Do we have a, we will have a, are we, should we fill the other position?
We have to do a separate nomination or open, close, and it's down there.
All right. Any other nominations?
Motion to close nominations.
Have a second?
Second.
Motion a second to close nominations. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Do we have a, a motion to appoint?
I would move to appoint Glenn Duer to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to appoint Mr. Duer to Board of Zoning Appeals. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Thank you very much. Now, do we want to open nominations for the unexpired term?
Yes.
Yes.
Do I have a motion?
I move to open the nominations for the unexpired term for the Board of Zoning.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Nominations, please.
I'd like to nominate Laura Wade.
Any others?
I'd like to nominate Richard Porter.
Motion to close?
Motion to close.
Have a second?
Second.
I have a motion to close nominations and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We will now vote. We will start first with Laura Wade. Laura Wade is the winner. Do I have a motion to appoint?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to appoint Laura Wade to the unexpired term on BZA.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to appoint Laura Wade. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. You can move that one if you like.
I move to open nominations for the Tax and Incentive Review Council.
Parks is next.
Oh, I'm sorry.
What is it?
I was going on order, I'm sorry.
Parks is next.
We'll go Parks. Parks Recreation and Culture?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to open nominations for Park Recreation and Culture Board. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, thank you.
Nominations are open.
I'll move to nominate Eric Corbett to Parks Recreation and Culture Board.
I would move to nominate Sharon Fulcher.
I would move, I nominate Christina Heaton.
I would also nominate Sandy Folic.
Sandy Folic.
Move to close nominations?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to close nominations. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And we are filling how many seats?
Three.
Three. All right, thank you. All right, ready to vote? Start with Mr. Corbett.
I'm going to add that vote to that one.
Sandy, next is Sandy Folic.
And Christina Heaton? Do we have a motion to appoint?
I would move to appoint Eric Corbett, Sharon Fulcher, and Christina Heaton to the Park Recreation and Culture Board.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to appoint those three individuals to the Park Recreation and Cultural Board. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, Bike Way and Non-Motorized Transportation. I have a motion to open.
I move that we open nominations for the Bike Way Advisory Board.
Second.
Motion and a second to open appointments, or nominations, to the Bike Way and Transportation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Do I see any nominations?
I'd like to nominate Laura Ray.
I would nominate Timothy Brown.
Motion to close?
Second.
Motion and a second to close nominations. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No need to vote. Do we have a motion to appoint?
Motion to appoint Timothy Brown and Laura Ray.
I have a second.
Second.
Motion and a second to appoint Timothy Brown and Laura Ray to the Bike Way and Non-Motorized Transportation Advisory Committee. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Tax Incentive Review Council. Motion to open.
Motion to open nominations.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to open nominations. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do I have nominations, please?
I'd like to nominate Carrie Martin.
Second, or I would move the nominations close.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to close nominations. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nominations are closed. We have one nomination. Do I have a motion to appoint?
Motion to appoint Carrie Martin.
Second? I have a motion and a second to appoint Carrie Martin to the Tax Incentive Review Council. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
I'd open nominations for the Environmental Advisory Board.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, open for nominations. All, nominations are open, please. Help yourself.
I would nominate Ronald Farkas.
Any more nominations? We have three vacancies.
I would nominate Paula Vance. Balance, excuse me.
I would nominate Samuel Burosis Maltese.
Motion.
Please.
Motion to close nominations.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to close nominations. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have three seats, three, and three nominations. Do I have a motion to appoint?
Motion to appoint?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to appoint these three applicants to the Environmental Advisory Committee. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
But there's another open vacancy.
I would.
We can't, we don't have anybody to fill it, so we can't.
I would nominate, I mean, I would open nominations for the Personnel Board.
I have a motion and a second to open nominations for Personnel Board. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion carries. Do I have a nomination?
I nominate Amy McKinney.
Second.
Motion to close nominations?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to close, to close nominations. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have one opening, one nominee. Is there a motion to appoint?
I would move to appoint Amy McKinney to the Personnel Board.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to appoint Amy McKinney to the Personnel Board. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Youth Development Committee. Do I have a motion to open?
Motion to open vacancies? Second.
I have a motion and a second to open nominations for the Youth Development Committee. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We have one vacancy.
Actually, we have four. I forgot to change that.
You have four?
We have four. Minimum of four.
There's no limit, correct?
Right, but right now, we would love to have four more.
If, if Samuel is willing to serve on both, is that a possibility?
Can't, no. It's, it's a charter.
We have three people, three applicants left who are eligible.
Nominate, I'd like to not make an, I would like to nominate Kristen Gravitt. I'd like to nominate Ashley Howard.
Somebody want to nominate?
Nominate Katrina Waszinski?
Krasinski.
I don't want to mispronounce that, but I think I did.
Do I have a motion to close?
Motion to close nominations? Second.
I have a motion and a second to close nominations. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have three applicants for the four-plus positions. Do I have a motion to appoint?
Motion to appoint?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to appoint the three applicants to the Youth Development Committee. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, we have the, do we want to appoint the BZA vacancy?
Very good.
Did we? Sorry about that.
So do you have the impact seat?
There's nobody left. We don't have anyone.
Okay.
So we're done.
All right, so that's it for this evening. Thank you very much. And thanks to all the applicants for these boards and commissions. We certainly appreciate your time and effort that you'll be spending helping this community out. So thanks very much. Next item on the agenda is the City Manager's Report. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to make everyone first, a public information meeting. I want to make everyone aware of it. This is another phase of the Dayton-Zenia Road from Eastland Drive to Beaver Brook Drive. This is the widening of the road to three lanes. So first, we'll have some public information meetings. This one will happen Tuesday, March 6th, Tuesday, March 6th, just in, what, less than two weeks. 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. It will be at Laffino Plaza, 3868 Dayton-Zenia Road. It's in the Laffino Plaza Meeting Room, so it's not in the senior center section, it's in the new section that was just renovated. For additional information, though, you can look under, at the city's website, under Engineering Department, or call them at 427-5513. I know they have a whole webpage set up about this project, so you can view more information there. Secondly, we have our Streetscape Clock, which we posted on Facebook. The more pictures than you can see here of the damage that's been done to the clock, the weather, you know, I put some, tried to be a little funny on Facebook, I try, saved the clock tower, and I said, no, this is not back to the future. But, you know, it is in some need of repair. It was supposed to be possibly taken last, late last week or early this week, but the manufacturer who built the clock and who is servicing it is down in Cincinnati on a river, and they're flooded. So it will be a slight delay, but here soon, you should drive by and the clock will be gone. So we didn't want anybody to say, somebody stole our clock. So it will be gone for some needed repairs very soon. And wanted to notify by about, an opportunity, you know, that one of the hardest things to get rid of is from paint, stain, antifreeze, some other fuels, vehicle maintenance fluids, lawn and garden products, and the Environmental Services of Green County is having a special waste drop-off, and you'd have to get this tomorrow, but Tuesday, February 27th, from 12:30 to 2:30. So if you're at home and you have some of those stuff, the paint, antifreeze, and things like that, you can maybe put it in your trunk of your car, it's not going to get too cold tonight, and you can drop it off during lunchtime tomorrow. So more information can be found on the Green County website under Environmental Services. And lastly, tonight, I just want to say, and I didn't want to steal any thunder, but I, Saturday, I had attended the Dayton Dragons National Anthem. I'll let you talk, I'll let you say it. I don't know if anybody else, because there was different shifts to judging, and I got to assist with Vice Mayor Garcia in judging, but we had a lot of fun with the National Anthem Tryouts. Got to hear, you know, a lot of groups sing, and a lot of individuals, and there was middle school age, I mean, like 10 and 11-year-olds. I, I don't know how they were so brave to get up there and sing, but it was a lot of fun, and I enjoyed meeting everybody and listening to them. You never know how much you hear the same song over and over and over. It's like, but it was a lot of fun, and I enjoyed it, and look forward to doing that again. And encourage anybody, go next year if you get invited, it's a lot of fun. That's all I have tonight.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll second that, it is a lot of fun. I've done it a couple years prior, and it is. It's a nice way to spend a few hours in the day. I have just a couple items. One is, I want to compliment the Road Department for the pothole repairs that they've been making. It's just been a terrible winter for that. I drove the senior vehicle today for about 50 miles around town, and the potholes are quite minimal, so thank you very much, and these couple days of sunny weather are going to make that a lot, a lot easier on you, so thank you. The other thing I want to comment on is, for those that aren't aware or haven't seen, heard of it, the Schuster Center, the performance, the opera of the Barber of Seville, is Sunday at 3:00, and that is Beaver Creek Day. So Beaver Creek residents can get tickets for $16, plus a service fee through the ticket booth, but the, so I, for one, plan to attend, and I hope as many residents as we can get out there to this event, they're reaching out to our community to try to get us all familiar with the Schuster Center and their, and their great performances, so I just wanted to get that word out. With that, we will move on to council time, and we would maybe start to my left this time.
When I went to get my tickets, Mayor, there was 20 seats left.
Is that all? That's fantastic.
Yeah, it was really stacked up, so big day for Beaver Creek and community.
Anything else, sir?
That'll do it.
All right. Councilmember Littler?
Thank you, Mayor Stone. I just want to quickly say thank you to all the applicants that reached out for the boards. You know, it's a time commitment, and it's a free service, you know, that we are very thankful for, to have each and every one of them. I know a number of us on the council have served on some of those boards in the past, and it's just a great way to get involved with the community and learn a little bit about the city government as well. So real appreciative of those that not only got appointed, but those that didn't get appointed. And along the same lines, just want to say a quick thank you to our Clerk of Council, Diane Lampton, for putting together those packets and doing it in the fashion that she did with the Excel sheet and where we could click on the hyperlinks. Melissa can attest, we used to get these packets and have to go through every one of them, you know, individually to see the resumes, the, which ones were interested in what roles and where to put them, but this, this new format was very nice, I liked it.
You did an outstanding job.
Yeah, thank you for doing that.
It was very, I thought it was very easy.
The new way is the best way, the better way, in my opinion. I won't speak for everybody here.
I will concur with you.
That's fine. Councilmember Van?
No report.
No report. Councilmember Rushing?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And just briefly, I just want to congratulate both the Wright State Men's and Women's Basketball Team. They're going to the Horizon League Tournament this weekend. For the men's team, they are the second seed. They'll be playing this Saturday, March 3rd, at 5:30, and they'll be playing against whoever wins the Green Bay or Detroit Mercy game. And then the women's team is, I believe, a third seed, and they'll be playing the first game against Cleveland State this Sunday, March 4th, against, at 12:00 noon, on ESPN3. um, against, uh, 12, 12 noon on ESPN3. So, as alumnis, want to congratulate them, and hopefully they can pull off a Horizon League victory.
Thank you. Councilmember Littler?
Well, I would just like to, uh, mention again, the Schuster. Um, I know a lot of people will be there, so it'll be a wonderful event, um, and a great way to bring the community together. And then, along with Beaver Creek, uh, we have a wonderful weekend coming up with the Weekend of Jazz, and so if you have not had the opportunity to, um, participate in the Weekend of Jazz or attend any of those functions, um, it is something you will be sorely, or so happy that you did, I should say. Um, I hadn't been until a few years ago, and what a treat. Uh, we have some amazing talent, and it's just wonderful to see, so. Weekend of Jazz and The Barber of Seville at the Schuster. So, big weekend that's coming up.
Yeah, very good.
That'll be it. Oh, and I, one more thing, thank you. Um, and I want to thank the optimists, um, the Green Optimist Club for coming today and for your project for the Avenue of Flags. And I just, I just love that. I love seeing them out there, and so even though I know the police department has one, I'll volunteer to, um, put one outside for the police department, because, again, where I live, it's just a little circle, so no one's really gonna be back there, but I do want to participate in a great project. And I think we need all the patriotism and community support that we can give for all of us, so, thank you for coming. It was a wonderful presentation.
Alright, and we do have our very own Clerk of Counsel. That's, I think, you're the official photographer for the, uh...
One of them.
For the Jazz, Weekend of Jazz, yes. Alright. Vice Mayor Garcia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, our city manager did steal my thunder a little, but I'll just piggyback on it. Uh, we did have a really good day Saturday judging the National Anthem singers. It was surprising to see, you were right, there were a lot of young individuals who melted it out. One girl, she was great. She just was walking around the mall and said, "Hey, I could do this." And she was probably the best performer the entire day, and she had no idea what was happening, so I looked forward to seeing her at the games, but we had a really good time doing that. I think I was a little bit more, uh, I wasn't as stringent with my score, and I think almost everybody got the highest score that I heard. I can't, I can't carry that tune to save my life, so, uh, God bless anyone who can.
She was giving everybody fours. I was almost gonna fill it out for her.
They will never take me back. They probably will never have me again, but it was a great day. And also, um, congratulations to the Beaver Creek Youth Council for putting on a spectacular event for their Day of Caring on Sunday. Uh, the pancakes were delicious. I absolutely loved them. It was a great way to start the day. I got to see, uh, former council member and mayor, Brian Jarvis, so that was really fun to have him around. And, uh, thank you again, Diane, for putting all the information together. That's a lot of work, and it made it very easy for us, so thank you for all of that.
Alright. Next on the agenda, citizen comments. Is there anyone here this evening that would like to address council on any subject whatsoever? Alright, Mayor Jarvis, you're sitting back there. You didn't sit back there all night just for anything.
He's missed us.
Oh, I knew I could get him up to the mic.
You have three minutes, sir.
Yes, sir.
I appreciate that. Uh, Mayor, Vice Mayor, thank you so much. Actually, tonight, I'm here to support the Green Optimist Club. I'm a member. Been a member since its inception. The Avenue of Flags, it's a fantastic fundraiser. Uh, it, it is great seeing throughout the city, all the flags lined up the way it is. And, uh, the mall, the green, every place around here is starting to get those, so the more we can participate, the more we can show patriotism. The great fundraiser for our local initiatives, Feed the Creek and others will benefit from those, and, uh, again, I'm here to support, uh, Aaron and our president also, so, thank you so much.
Thank you.
It's also different being here, sitting in the back after nine years.
Yeah.
It's like, uh, very, very good seeing you guys struggle over the Board of Commissions' assignments and not me this time, so. It's been a great evening. Thank you so much.
Thanks, man. Alright, anyone else? Seeing none, we will move on. Anything for the good? Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you very much.